We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the American Flag and remain standing by imocation.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O gracious God, we come as omnibus, we know how. Lord, first, we want to say thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Thank you, oh Lord, for the opportunity to assemble here in this democracy to discuss the business of the cities and your citizens. We give you the glory, we give you honor and praise. Direct our tongues, direct our minds as we speak here tonight. Be with every individual that who has assembled here, be with their families. And when we leave, oh Lord, tonight, direct us safely to our destination. We give you the glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
Amen.
That clerk we call Row.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this meeting to order. Character trait of the month is decisiveness, the ability to recognize key factors and analyze difficult decisions. This time we have approval minutes, City Council meeting October 20th, 2015. We have a motion.
So may I?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor approve of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes are now approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please come to the microphone. On the agenda. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. If I might have a point of interest.
Yes, sir.
If I can hear you.
Devin Peake, Chris Wood to come up, turn the microphone over to them for a little bit.
How are y'all doing tonight? Got a couple things I wanted to share with y'all. The first one is, I introduce Chris Wood to you. Chris is new assistant horticulturist in urban management department. He promoted from within. He's been on the job now, I guess, a couple of months and doing an outstanding job. Glad to have him in that role in the urban management family. And want to introduce him to y'all and his wife and child. Did, uh... Want to get a picture? Second thing is, is requested of Devin, a month or so ago, to do a report for urban management that kind of outlined where the department was, where it is, where it's going. He spent a lot of time on this, really a month, took a lot of time to put this together. And I'm gonna let him just tell you a little bit about it and, uh...
Okay, thank you. Basically, how this came about was the mayor wanted us to kind of give a report of where we stood to date on how effective and efficient we are with every task that we complete. So with that, we had to really break down and look at every task we do. And with this document, what I wanted to do was give factual information. There wasn't too much to read. So I broke it down into about 20 questions that I broke down every task that we do. Now, there are some support roles that aren't covered in this, moving fuel around the city for other departments, et cetera. But it has a section in here for the tasks we do, how we have the areas we've battled, what we're facing right now, and what we're gonna face. So it'll touch on a little bit of positions we may need in the near future. There's short-term and long-term goals that you'll see that, you know, whenever we come present our budget to our committee, you know, we're trying to sell what we need in that moment. So this really gives a ground layer to show what we want for the future. This is a fluid document, we'll be adding stuff to it. We'll, as we build some, there's some things in here that we want to do that you'll be able to see added to it late, you know, in the years to come. This is basically ground zero for this project for urban management. With the addition of Chris and his role, this allows me to focus on some of this, really moving our department, looking at five, 10, 15 years down the road. You know, during the time putting this together, I was not in the field working on the Main Street Media Project, which is still, we're still have a few things we need to finish on yet. But Chris kind of jumped in there and took that role, which allowed me to be able to do this. So I just want to say thank you for everything that y'all approved and let us do, everything from positions like that that are key in moving us forward and, you know, all the equipment we have that keeps us being mechanized and keeps us efficient. So if you have any questions after taking some time in this, you know, you know how to get in touch with me, email.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions or comment for Devin?
So we're gonna see improvement on Highway 31, right? In the future, right?
That's, well, one thing we do want to do, and I touched on this in the landscape, is in the future, I want to build basically a list of landscape renovation projects or enhancements and have a list that we can go from, that we come to you as a body and say, okay, this year, this is what we want to do. Do we want, they're gonna cost about this much, you know, start looking at funding, go ahead and design the projects, look at landscape, I mean irrigation, I'm sorry, and design, you know, have all this information ready so when it comes budget time, we can say, okay, how much of this chunk do we want to look at doing this year? Another thing that really, I guess, became a realization that I saw doing this, something that I was challenged from doing this, was one of the areas we're not real efficient on is whenever we have to do landscape and irrigation projects, because we don't do them every day. Our staff is not trained to take on a decent-sized landscape project. So we're gonna form project teams, or for lack of a better term, task force, that whenever we have these projects come together, we're gonna have a few people that we'll pull from different crews instead of shutting down a crew 100 percent. We may shut down every crew 10 percent. Pull them, put them in there, those will be the people that start getting more of the training, and we're gonna do that based off, that's gonna be interest-based. So to answer your question, we're going to have a list, and that will be, if that's, make, that'll be on the list.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, just reiterate a little bit on the, on the binder there, one reason for, I wanted to see all the councils to get one, because most of the time, we start talking about urban management, you're usually looking at the ball fields, the pretty flowers that are hanging out here, the curb appeal that so many times that we're really looking at catches our eye. There's so much behind the scene that goes on with urban management. The, uh, they have kept us out of court so many, many times because of the, the storm waves that they keep playing and all the documentation that they have for that, that is very, very important. So if there is, ever is a flooding, we have the documentation to say that we did what we were designed to do, what we had to do in that area. So they are a very, very important part of this team, and just want to thank them and look forward to working with them in the future. But moving right on ahead, Mr. President, we had a great turnout for the Halloween Candy Walk. I think it was the largest that's, has been reported, been the largest ever seen downtown. And I want to thank Parks and Recs and all the other departments. I know Public Safety had people there. My department had people there. I think Finance had people, Judicial, it was, I think it was a great day for a lot of people. We had a little more people than ever before down there, and so we will be looking at that event to see how we're gonna handle that for next year. But just moving right on along, Council President and I will be at the National League of Cities Convention the rest of the week, representing Prattville and learning on how we can greatly benefit this great city of ours. Is that, Mr. President? I send my report?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on into our agenda. We report from Council Special Committee, Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir. Meeting of the Wastewater Committee was held Tuesday afternoon, September the 27th. Committee met with Mr. Jim Marshall, representing Jackson Thornton Utilities Consultants, who's been retained by the city to conduct a rate study. The purpose of this meeting was to ensure that both parties had a good understanding of what was being requested from the consultant and what is expected by the city. Mr. Marshall reported he would like to utilize the 2014 audited financial data and the 2014 billing statistics to establish a baseline study. This study would tell us financially where we are with respect to the year ending on September 30th, 2014, concerning our ability of our current rate structure to meet our current fixed and variable expenses. It's anticipated this report will be available before Christmas. When received, this report will be shared with the council. Shortly thereafter, a second report will be generated projecting construction costs, debt service, and operational expenses for the next five years. This report will project growth of users and the revenue needed to accommodate both the fixed and variable costs needed to support the proposed facility upgrades. Mr. Marshall reported that a five-year window was a reasonable time period to make assumptions concerning projections. The committee concurred and anticipates the need for future rate studies as this long-term project is implemented. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Striplin, for that report. Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Whiteside?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
We're going to our agenda. We have a considered agenda consisting of two items. Number one is a resolution to declare various weeded laws to be a public nuisance in order to obeyment per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number two is a resolution to Surplus 2 out of warranty DVM, Digital Video 500 Series, from the Police Department, and to authorize trade-in to Digital Alley Incorporated. We have a motion to place these two items on a consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor placing these two items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Do we have a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on these two items. All in favor of these two items, signify by raising your right hand. And these two items have been adopted. We're going to our regular agenda. First item, resolution to the award bid number 015-008 to Digital Alley Incorporated for the purchase of six in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems at a cost not to exceed $23,150. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for six DVM 800 digital video systems, and whereas 13 bids were let for the Police Department for said systems, and whereas one sealed bid was received in Digital Alley Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $3,995 per system, which includes a five-year warranty per system plus $180 for shipping. Whereas there's a trade-in credit of $1,000 for two Alamo warranty DMV 500 digital video systems pursuant to Resolution Book 2015A, page blank, and whereas said systems are budgeted expense for the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 15-8 in the amount of $23,150 to Digital Alley Incorporated for six DVM 800 digital video systems, and said funds are proven appropriated from the fiscal year 2016 budget line item, Police Department Equipment Maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number two is a resolution to ratify and affirm the purchase of 11 additional 2016 police interceptor SUV vehicles through bid number 015-005 from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $288,211. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for 11 2016 police interceptor SUV vehicles, and whereas bid number 15-5 was let for one, one or more 2016 police interceptor SUV vehicles, and Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $26,201 per vehicle. And whereas bid number 15-5 was originally awarded by the City Council in the Resolution Book 2015, page 53, on May 5th, 2015. Whereas the cost per vehicle awarded in bid number 15-5 shall be honored throughout the 2016 model year, and whereas said vehicles are budgeted items for the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby ratifies and affirms the purchase of 11 2016 police interceptor SUV vehicles at a cost of $288,211 through bid number 15-5 from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated, and said funds are proven appropriated from fiscal year 2016 budget line item, Police Department Capital Outlet. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? We'll be in discussion. Counselor Bowles?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, do we have cash on hand to pay for this? And how is this gonna put our fleet on the Police Department?
Uh, we're still in need of more. It'd help get, you know, keep us caught up, but we're still, you know, behind the curve some, but we're still, um, still needing more. So if you can find more funding, I'm certain the Police Department can find more of these cars. But as you do purchase more of these cars, it does cut down on our maintenance costs.
Great. Thank you so much, y'all have a good day.
Any other council member? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number three is a resolution to authorize purchase of emergency lights equipment and installation through bid number 014-015 from emergency lighting by Hanes for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $39,275.91. Counselor Starnes, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for emergency lights equipment installation for nine 2016 Ford interceptor SUVs, and whereas bid number 14-15 was let for one or more emergency lights equipment installation. Emergency Lights by Hanes was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $4,363.99 per unit. And whereas bid number 14-15 was originally awarded by the City Council in Resolution Book 2014B, page 193, on December 16, 2014. And whereas bid number 14-15 stated that the bid price shall be honored for a period of one year, and whereas said emergency lights equipment installation are budgeted for the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorize and approve the purchase of emergency lights, equipment, and installation through bid number 14-15 from emergency lights by Hanes in the amount of $39,275.91. And said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2016 budget line item, Police Department Equipment Maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Crappy Masters Incorporated to co-sponsor a two-day crappy tournament to be held April 29th, 30th, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $10,000. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm ahead of myself. Item number four, to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Hurricane Electronics Incorporated for improvements to the Northern Street Communications Tower at a cost of $49,858.64. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to improve communication abilities for the Fire Department and Police Department, and whereas on September 2nd, 2014, in Resolution Book 2014-B, page 140, the City Council authorized the purchase of a 403-foot God Lattice Tower located on North, uh, Northington Street from Marcus Cables of Alabama LLC, and authorized necessary improvements to, to said tower. Whereas the City of Prattville closed the purchase of the Communication Tower on October 16th, 2015. Whereas Hurricane Electronics, um, Incorporated has the ability to provide the necessary improvements to said tower at the cost of $49,858.64. And whereas said improvements are budgeted expense of capital project fund. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the funds in the amount of $49,858.64 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Hurricane Electronics Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2016 Capital Improvement Fund. Be further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to enter into an agreement with Hurricane Electronics Incorporated to complete said improvements on the behalf of the City of Prattville. I so move.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Crappy Masters Incorporated to co-sponsor a two-day crappy tournament to be held April 29th, 30th, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $10,000. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Crappy Masters Incorporated desires to conduct a two-day crappy tournament at Cooters Pond on April 29th and 30th, 2016, and whereas the City of Prattville and Elmore County Commission shall serve as site co-host sponsors for said event, and whereas the host sponsorship fee of $20,000 shall be shared between the City of Prattville and the Elmore County Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized to enter into an agreement with Crappy Masters Incorporated to co-host sponsor a two-day crappy tournament on April 29th and 30th, 2016. Be it further resolved that the funds in an amount not to exceed $10,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Crappy Masters Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2016 budget line item Parks and Rec Department Operating Supplies. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number six is a resolution to set a public hearing to zone property located at County Road 4, at Jensen Road to B1 Neighborhood Commercial, R3 Single Family Residential, and M1 Light Industrial. Counselor Brown, will you read it? And as you all are aware before you should read that you have a letter before you from Mr. Duke concerning this item, and you're all aware. Proceed.
Set a public hearing to zone property located at County Road 4, at Jensen Road to B1 Neighborhood Commercial, R3 Single Family Residential, and M1 Light Industrial. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. We have a second? No second? This item dies for a lack of second. Item number seven is a resolution to set a public hearing, to set a public hearing to adopt a proposed amendment to Article 4, Section 43, reapplication of the City of Prattville zoning ordinance. Counselor Whiteside, will you read it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission proposed and recommends that the City Council amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville with the addition of Article 4, Section 43, reapplication according to Attachment A, and whereas the amendment to the City of Prattville zoning ordinance, Article 4, Section 43, reapplication addresses the reapplication process during a 365-day period, and whereas all requirements of the laws of the state of Alabama with regard to advertisement of the proposed change have been met, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on August 20th, 2015. Now there, now therefore let, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers at City Hall.
Make a motion, so moved?
So moved, Mr. President.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and the resolution portion is adopted. Will you read the ordinance portion, Counselor Whiteside?
Yes, Mr. President. Pursuant to the requirements of Title 115277, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, notice is hereby given by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that at the regular meeting of said city council on the third day of November 2015 at Prattville City Hall, 101 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, the following proposed ordinance Be it ordained by the City of Council, the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, and subsequently amended from time to time, that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the first day of December 250, 2015, at 6:00 PM, considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such a time and place, all persons desire, had an opportunity to be heard in favor or in opposition of that, of said, such ordinance, that the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Zoning, Article 4, amended is hereby amended as follows. That all other items and provisions of zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specific, specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendment herein contained was considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on August 20th, 2015. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This ordinance portion sets a public hearing for this item for December 1st, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers. Number eight, to set a public hearing to adopt a proposed ordinance to Article 663, swimming and wading paths of the City of Prattville zoning ordinance. Counselor Whiteside, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend that the City Council amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville with the addition of Article 6, Section 63, swimming and wading pools, according to Attachment A, and whereas the amendment to the City of Prattville zoning ordinance, Article 6, Section 63, swimming and wading pools, addresses requirements for swimming and wading pools, and whereas all requirements of the laws of the state of Alabama with regard to advertisement of the proposed change have been met, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on August 20th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers at City Hall. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. The resolution portion is adopted. Counselor Whiteside, will you read?
Yes, Mr. President. Pursuant to the requirements of Title 115277, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, notice is hereby given by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that at the regular meeting of said city council on the third day of November 2015 at Prattville City Hall, 101 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, the following proposed ordinance was introduced. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, and subsequently amended from time to time, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the first day of December 2015, at 6:00 PM, considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such a time and place, all persons who desire had an opportunity to be heard in favor or in opposition to such ordinance, that the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Zoning, Article 4, amended is hereby amended as follows. Article 6, Section 63, swimming and wading pools. Swimming pools and wading pools with a depth of one foot or more in any portion of the pool and not located with a permanently and completely wall structure shall be constructed no closer than 10 feet of any property line. That all other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendment herein contained was considered and approved by the City Prattville Planning Commission on August 20th, 2015. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This ordinance also sets a public hearing on this item for December 1st, 2015, 6:00 PM in each chambers. Item number nine is an ordinance also, petition for annexation of Cobb Jones property, Redfield Road. Counselor Whiteside, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the City of, City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville is a city with a population of... of Prattville is a city with a population of over six thousand inhabitants located in the state of Alabama, and that it has been presented by petition by all owners of property located and contained which are contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville as they are now situated, and that the property described in petition sought to be annexed is as described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that said property does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality, and that all owners as defined in Title eleven forty-two dash twenty, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, have executed said petition requesting the property to be annexed into the City of Prattville, and that the City of Prattville finds that it is in the best interest of the City of Prattville and its inhabitants to annex said property, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the petition has met all requirements of Title eleven dash forty-two dash twenty through eleven dash forty-two dash twenty-three, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and rearranged so as to embrace and include the following property as described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that such property shall become part of the corporate area of Prattville, Alabama, upon passage and publication of this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the extension of sewer lines in the newly annexed areas shall not be provided until such times as it becomes economically feasible for the city to provide same. Be it further ordained that a copy of the petition be filed in the office of the Judge of Probate of Elmore County, Alabama, and that this ordinance be published in the Prattville Progress of Otto County, Alabama. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It's been an ordinance of permanent nature. The rule must be suspended unanimously in order to be considered tonight. We have a motion to suspend.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule signify by raising your right hand. Rules have now been suspended on this item. Will it be in a discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this item has been adopted. That exhausts our agenda for the night. At this time, we will move to comments from persons present. Anyone liking to make a comment at this time, raise your hand, please. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and address the council.
Wow.
You okay?
Yeah.
Where are you?
Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Do we need to check that?
Oh, I just tripped on my foot. I'm clumsy.
You okay?
Yeah, thank you. I'm clumsy. Thank you.
That was embarrassing. Hi, can y'all hear me? I'm Anne DePrazio from District Four from the Cambridge Street. Oh, goodness. All these good-looking, straight people. It's so good to see you. Is it okay if I ask you, are there any racists on the council? No racists? Does anyone support gay rights here?
Well, we lack...
Oh, this short, okay? Everybody told me this is a waste of time. LGBT inclusion will never happen in Prattville, never in Alabama. I'm happy to waste my time here with you tonight. LGBT inclusion is vital to attracting talented people to a city. The fifty million Americans in the creative class prefer to live in cities that embrace diversity. I believe Prattville can be such a city. President Wood told me today that he supports all rights. Can I get a second on that? Do we support all rights? Can I get a second? Anyone?
Ma'am, you're not here to vote on anything.
I imagine that includes queers, because like my dad says, queers are people too. I believe in the power of prayer, and I pray that you will pass an ordinance that makes Prattville a non-discrimination city. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comment, Mrs. DePrazio? Thank you, ma'am. And if you would like for... Will you?
I think I locked my knees. I just locked my knees. I've done this before. I just locked my knees.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we hope that Mrs. DePrazio is okay.
If there are no other comments, I'm going to ask that...
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Doug Dietzel, and I own the property of four twelve Hallmark Drive. You may remember that I had the opportunity to come in front of you last meeting on October twentieth. Of course, I was discussing an issue that concerned me about public health and trash in the streets. Since that time, however, there's been some positive momentum. It seems like we're going in the right direction. Here recently, the City of Prattville posted the code enforcement position, and I'm sure that applications are coming in. That and alongside the... The... How can I put it? The temporary action that you have taken in regards to the double duty on the peace officers as they go through the facility itself, or as they go through the neighborhood, has made a difference as it relates to public property and public thoroughfares. That combined with the focus of the sanitation department and their attentiveness to come up and communicate with the residents has made a difference. I'm pleased to stand here in front of you today to say it appears that my voice was heard, and I appreciate that, and I thank everybody that was involved in this, and especially Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your understanding of the needs that we have, for your focus, and for your commitment of making this community better, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I know you don't get a lot of praise, at least this is the third meeting I've sat in, and we do appreciate it. And one last thing, this may not be the form for it, but we're all friends here, right? We can communicate. I'm actually looking forward to planning for that position and working for you guys, and specifically, Mr. Mayor, to work for you and to show you my dedication, my loyalty, and my commitment to making sure that the City of Prattville lives up to its name as a preferred community, and together, we can all do this. And again, thank you very much for your help on this, and thank you for listening to my voice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, let me thank all of you all for coming. Thank you, city employees, for what you do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank the council for your steadfastness in working with your committees, because if it wasn't for that, you could not come up here and make votes as fast as you do. I want the general republic to know that that takes place because there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and we do appreciate that. Also, let me say that we hope that things are well with Miss DePrazio, and that all is well with the rest of y'all. With that being said, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, six P.M. in each council chambers. We have a motion to adjourn.
The ladies and gentlemen...
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a...